The Lindbergh Schools Board of Education Workshop 1610 is called to order. 0.1 Additions, deletions, corrections, or modifications and supplements to board agenda. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
2.0 Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Megan has motioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. 4.0 Discussion Topics. 4.01 is compass updates. And Beth, I believe we start with you.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. So, we are here today to present to you our communications plan for Lindbergh Schools. And I am very happy to have three guests with us today. I have Dr. Lori Mueller, who is by phone, and she will introduce herself later, but she is with the Donovan Group and was a facilitator for our process. And then I have Kelly Chu, who is a parent at Sappington Elementary School, and Dr. Brandy Koppel, who is our Assistant Principal at Long Elementary School. And you're going to hear from them later, but just want to thank them for being here. Before Lori gets started, I want to remind the board that the communications audit and communications plan development is now part of our organizational DNA. So this is part of our process following the development of our organization's strategic plan, which happened last year, the development of that five-year strategic plan. And so, this year, we took the opportunity to dive deep on our communication processes to make sure that we're supporting the work of that plan and communication. So with that, I am going to turn this over to Dr. Lori Mueller from the Donovan Group.
Yes, thank you, everybody. I am just grateful that I have had this opportunity to serve along with your district team, as well as your community members. I have told Beth this, and I want to share with you that I have found the process with the Lindbergh Schools to be one of high quality, mainly because of the individuals who have engaged in that process. So we are very pleased to share with you tonight our new communications plan based on all of that collaboration and hard work from everyone. I am Dr. Lori Mueller. I am a partner and owner of the Donovan Group. We are a K-12 public schools communications firm. We are headquartered in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and we have offices in 15 different states. And I am based in Florida. My background is, I'm a former school superintendent myself. I served as a school superintendent for six years in the state of Wisconsin, and I'm just happy to be on this side of things, to be able to help out school systems across the country with their communications and community engagement needs. We understood as we came into this process with you all, that your new strategic plan is really guiding your priorities. And I think that you will find that the communications plan that the team put together is going to help you have success with that particular goal of your strategic plan around communication.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll go to the next slide, and we'll talk to you about our communications planning committee. So we put together a committee of a little bit over 20 individuals. They represented all of our buildings across the district, different employee groups. We had parents. We had two of our board members, Andy and Rachel, served with us. We had members of our teaching and learning department and our executive cabinet. I know Dr. Cravato is here tonight. She served with us. Dr. Cochran, he was on our committee as well. And so, we really had a great representation of voices. And I think what impressed me the most was, especially among our parents. We targeted parents who are professionals in marketing and communications, and that just really added a whole layer of expertise and a great professional outside lens to this process. So we were, I was really excited to have those parents participate, and a lot of parents whose voices we maybe even hadn't heard before on committees. So new faces, but really talented individuals. So you're going to hear from, as I mentioned, Kelly and Brandy later. We also had our communications department, who's here with us tonight. They served on the committee. And then we had some really good conversations after each meeting with regard to the feedback we received, ideas for moving forward. So it's just been an energizing process, and we're really excited about it. But as you can see, we had four meetings between October, and our last meeting was January 13th, last Monday. And it was just, it was a great process. So we are going to now go into, well, actually, I'm going to turn it over to Lori at this time. She's going to walk you through the audit process that we had that led up to the creation of the communications plan. And then she and I will take turns talking through the strategies that we're bringing forward. So Lori?
Yes, thanks, Beth. So as we begin a communications planning process with a school district, we want to kind of assess the scene, if you will, and we do that through an audit process. And that audit process usually contains four different strategies. One of them is our communications inventory. And what that is, is my team will do a deep dive into what they can find from your communications online, and view the different kinds of communications that come out from the district. Along with that, we worked with Beth to identify those individuals in the district that we would say are key communicators. Individuals who maybe are the ones that do the most communicating on behalf of the district, as well as maybe address questions, or are able to convey feedback from others across the district. And so, we wanted to speak to each of those individuals. We conducted our interviews by phone. And we did that with a lens of like, what's really working well for you in terms of communicating? Where do you see that you'd like to see yourself stretch? We tried to identify those areas that we could maybe insert some support in terms of growing, growing the district's communication and engagement efforts. From there, we worked on creating a survey for your student, staff, and community. And that survey, we deployed for a number of weeks to have people respond to all types of questions, and questions also related to your website, as a request from Beth and her team. As I know, the district is working to kind of analyze the website and determine some potential refinement moving forward here. So our audit process did include a high-level website review, and we were able to provide Beth and her team with some initial findings. When we go to the next slide, you will see that all of that effort was pulled together into what we call a communication audit report. And there is a QR code on this slide for you to scan if you'd like to have a copy on your phone. The results of our communication audit were a driver for the committee to use in deciding where do we want to identify goals that would give us the most success and the best return on our investment with our efforts. So as you will review that audit report, where we landed from the Donovan Group team is we like to offer recommendations for potential goals as we move into that planning process. And from the audit results for Lindbergh Schools, we found a few recommendations here. So one, and the one that rose to the top fairly quickly is the recommendation to streamline all the communications that are occurring in the district. And just from a general lens, what we understood from the audit is that many of your school audiences feel overwhelmed with the amount of tools and platforms and ways that communications come to them, making it sometimes difficult to find the information that's most needed. And also, just again, that feeling of being overwhelmed, and leading to perhaps people not even reading or engaging with your communications. So that was a strong recommendation that came out, that rose to the top. We know again that the district is already engaged in enhancing the website, and that did come from our audit by looking at what your website currently has. And we were able to provide Beth and her team with some specific examples for improvement with that redesign. We found that the district's current crisis communication process seems to be working really well, so we think it's important to maintain that process. We heard that that was a strength. We also found that there be some promise in perhaps building greater communication capacity. By this, we mean that you are a large system compared to most school systems, and there are so many good things going on. And so, how do we, how do we develop capacity across all of your school sites and team members to be strong in their communication engagement efforts? So this is an opportunity to think about strategic professional learning to build that capacity. And then just some other recommendations that came from the audit was engaging non-parents and staff. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about this as a committee, about, again, a promise in trying to engage those in the community who don't have students in your schools. And particularly, we focused in on those individuals who are senior citizens, as well as some staff that don't have children in our schools as well. We talked about the value of that in terms of really having all of your stakeholders continue to invest in your success, and to be a support for the mission and vision of your strategic plan. Through that, we felt it's really important also to tell the district's story. You already have some great structures in place to do that, but there's such a huge opportunity to really promote and market the district. We recognize that unlike many school systems across the country, Lindbergh Schools does not seem to have a challenge with enrollment, which is great to hear. But we want to tell our story, not so much to grab enrollment, as much as to just continue to have that community understanding of the value that the school system brings to Lindbergh. And then lastly, we noted that the district does a good job of seeking ongoing feedback from various stakeholders. We think that that's important as a recommendation to continue to do so. So all of the results of that audit piece helped our team, our team being the planning committee, to create a new strategic communications and engagement plan. In that planning process, we talk about what are the key messages that we want all of our audiences to hear? And in many ways, this work was, was ready for us to take because of the work with your strategic plan. We spent time identifying targeted audiences, looking at what are maybe some subgroups of your population across the community that we could do better with in terms of communicating and engaging. We identified our goals that we want to accomplish with the plan, as well as what are some specific strategies or tactics to make sure that we have success with each of those goals? And ultimately, what does success look like? So making sure that we include metrics in this plan that would be an indicator of success. So after, as Beth said, we had four meetings and lots of great work with a very engaged group. We are pleased to share with you that 2025 to 30 communication plan. And if you go to the slide that has the QR code with the Lindbergh flyer there, you are able to scan this QR code to get a copy, again, on your phone of the communications plan in its entirety.
Thank you, Lori. And so, this was also shared with the Board of Education in your board packet. It is a final draft that we're bringing to you for feedback and questions tonight. And then after tonight's meeting, we will go back with the Donovan Group, make any final changes to it, and bring that to you for approval in February. So you're welcome to take a look, but this is, and this is the almost final draft. So Lori and I are going to take turns going quickly through each of the five strategies. We're going to just highlight what the strategy is, although she's hit on some of these, so we can go through them rather quickly, and then talk to you about the tactics that we're using to meet the needs of that strategy. So strategy number one, this quickly rose to the top, and this should not surprise anyone on the board or in our community. We always talk about in the listening and learning results how communications is what we're doing really well, and it's also where we can improve every single time. And I think when we look at the comments on areas we can improve, this streamlining and consolidating of our communication is one of those comments we see over and over again. So this was not a surprise at all, and it's something we're ready to do. And so, as far as the tactics, the, one of the things we're going to be doing is developing communication protocols for the district, and that is so that from the district level, here's what we're communicating and how to use the tools that we have, building administrators, that they have a similar set of parameters and protocols, and then even our teachers. Here's recommendations for what you put in your weekly communication. Here's how to use social media, if you are using social media. So we're not having that overlap that we have right now, where things are getting repeated, but everyone has their role. And another way that we're going to coordinate that communication is that, parallel to this process, as Lori alluded to, our, a district committee was running, we were doing an RFQ for website and mass notification system, which we're bringing those recommendations to you at the board meeting tonight. And the tool that we've identified for mass communication will actually do a lot of this work for us. So the tools are much better than when we did this five years ago. We're looking at bringing you a platform recommendation called Parent Square, that actually brings all of our communication into one platform for parents. It delivers it the way they want to, want to see it, email, text, but it puts everything in the same place for them. So it takes away that phone screen with 20 apps that are all related to Lindbergh, and it brings our families into one centralized place, not only for the communication where sending them, but for that two-way communication with teachers and with principals and other staff as well. So we're really excited about the tool that's going to allow us to implement this. And then in addition to the district communication protocols, we also want to put in place onboarding for our families. So as they are coming into the school, and our existing families as well, but our new families too, coming in as a parent, here's the tools that we use, and here's how you can use them to basically effectively navigate being a parent in our schools and being informed, knowing where to go for information, and also where to find things that you need. So along with those protocols, we'll have the onboarding for them as well. That'll all kind of roll in with our, rolling out this new tool. So it's all going to really flow nicely. We've had some nice correlation along this process with, with those things as well. And then, as Lori did mention this, but prioritizing urgent versus routine communication. I think we do a pretty good job of this already, but just continuing to be aware of what communication tools we're using for urgent situations versus just the more routine communication with, with others. And Lori is going to go to the next slide with us and talk about strategy two.
Yeah, so strategy two is about telling the district's story with highlighting the positive things that are happening in the school on a regular basis. So with this, the intent is, again, to really put a spotlight on all the great things that are happening across all your buildings and classrooms each day. And the, the primary focus here is to drive engagement with the district. And so, doing that through telling stories, as well as, again, targeting those who maybe do not have students in the schools or direct connections to the district. So some of the tactics for this, the first one is sharing school and classroom highlights. Your district already does a fairly great job of that. We're looking to maybe intensify that effort, and primarily through social media engagement. The next one is about developing infographics and visuals, so leaning into graphic design to create communications that are easy to access around complex strategies for improvement or complex initiatives that are occurring across the district or within school buildings. So making this a tactic that we focus on, creating new ones as the need is there with the work that the board and the leadership is doing. The other one is, we heard that people would love to have highlights from your Board of Education, discussions and meetings and work. And so, this is something that we think could be a benefit for including your students. We did talk to a small group of students one, one time I was onsite, and we conducted a focus group. And we heard from them that they would like to know what the Board of Education is focused on. So it gave us some opportunity here to think about others that might want that same. And then lastly, for a tactic here, is we see some value in using a practice of video to give monthly updates to all of our audiences. And these would be short, two-minute videos that are produced to, to bring our community along with us with the important work that we're doing.
All right, so going to the next slide. Strategy three is to expand and improve upon the district's digital presence and communication efforts. So this is focusing primarily on website and social media. One of the things we talked about a lot in our committee is using our website as a marketing tool, more of a marketing opportunity, so putting more of those video stories that we're creating, more pictures and more information about our programs, and really just using that to tell our story. Again, going through a website redesign, we're going to have a lot more opportunities to do that through our new platform, so really excited about that. And then scheduling those routine reviews of content and making sure that things are staying up to date and user-friendly for our district as well. And then with social media, just continuing to create and post regularly updates of things happening in our school. But also, I do want to give a compliment to our communications department, because I think this is something that we do really well. And we talked about, like, we have a lot of great content on our social media. How do we then also showcase that on our website and put it into other things, so that people who might not be on that particular channel can still see all of the good news that's happening in our buildings? And then, we also talked about the importance of social media engagement when it's appropriate, and so just making sure that questions are answered when they are posed on our channels, and including social media in those communication protocols for our building and our classroom level employees, so that they understand the best ways to use it when it's appropriate, and how they can utilize that tool.
All right, and then with strategy four, this one, again, is focusing on promoting the positives, but in this regard, looking at how do we do that intentionally to market the, the value of the district to your overall community, including your students and families? And so, with this, some of the tactics we, we would recommend is implementing a marketing campaign. And when we say campaign, this means that there's, there's some research that goes into play about where do we might benefit in marketing the school district, as well as then creating a set of communications and strategies that are aligned to goals that we would set for the campaign. Again, enrollment doesn't seem to be a challenge for your school system, but I think we discovered that those who do not have strong connections to the schools, this is an opportunity to have others engage with us in a way that commits investment, that they feel empowered, that this is their district too, and just really having that wraparound love and support for the work of the district. Along with the tactics here, we included community outreach. And this outreach was really, as you, as you dig into the plan and look at the details of this tactic, you'll see that there's a focus on creating strategies to engage with your senior citizens, or to do some intergenerational programming, so that we can highlight, again, the value that the school system brings to everyone in, in the community. And then lastly, having really strong media relations. And the tactics here are working to provide our local media outlets with the kinds of information that would help promote and celebrate the work of the district with the audiences that even go beyond Lindbergh.
Okay, and then our final strategy, strategy five, is about seeking feedback and continually, continuous improvement. And so, this is an important strategy for us as well. We talked about conducting a yearly communications survey with our community to get their feedback, see how we're doing, and just check in and find ways that we can continue to improve, and make sure that we're making progress. And then, in addition to that, like I said, I just, I was so impressed and encouraged by our community, our committee members. And just, I have to say too, with our communications department, when we could come back after these meetings and have conversations about ways to improve, and use that feedback to make changes, that it got us talking about the value of having a communications board advisory committee, so that we can continue to check in with our community on our work, and have them work on these goals with us, give us that feedback from their professional lens. And so, that's what we're looking to do for next year, is to establish board advisory committee for communications that can help us really make sure that we're walking through this process with fidelity, and that we're seeing the results that we want. So, we're going to wrap up by giving our guests just a minute to talk about their experiences. Before I do, does there, is there anyone, are there any questions about the strategies that we presented?
I think they're great. I think it's all-encompassing. I love the work with the website and all the social media. I think it's going to be awesome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, now I'm going to let Dr. Koppel and Kelly Chu, they're going to just share briefly their experiences serving on this committee.
There we go. I just wanted to share what a positive experience this whole process was. We ended our last meeting, I guess it was on Monday that we had it, and it was share one word to kind of encompass this whole process. And so many people were just excited, hopeful, that's really what everyone shared. And so, I think really what made that happen was all the voices that were at the table to come up with this plan and make these decisions. First, from the group that we had, and then also from the survey, survey that was conducted, whether you were sitting in this room at the meeting, or you were sitting at home on your phone filling out the survey, you had a voice in the decisions that were made, which was really powerful. And then with the group that was all here to discuss the conversa, have the conversations, what I found very powerful, and what I learned myself a ton from, were our community members that work in the field of communications, but outside of education. And I think they brought a lot of expertise to the conversation, but outside in a different realm, which was very powerful. Also, I think partnering with the Donovan Group was really powerful. Lori did a really great job. She started almost every meeting with, okay, so the last conversations, I heard a lot of people saying this. And so, she really was taking what all the community members were saying to create this plan and give us actionable steps, because there were a lot of people, a lot of voices, and she really narrowed down and helped us guide that work. And lastly, I am really excited, and it was the number one goal on that streamline of information and kind of having that roadmap. As a communicator, our goal is to make sure parents are clear, students are clear on what we are doing in the building and what's taking place. And so, having that clarity for everyone, I think is going to benefit our whole community. Thank you.
Hi, my title's up there, but I am also, in addition to that, a, a new resident to the Lindbergh School District, and I have a daughter that's in kindergarten at Sappington, and really, first generation in the public school system. So, learning a lot as I go here, and have been very impressed so far, and was so honored to be added to this committee. But also, wanted to throw in that, as a fellow marketer with my background in nonprofit healthcare and technology, what Beth's team and Lori have done is no small feat. They combed through 837 survey responses, and then broke that down for a committee to break it down even further. So they did a lot of work. It was, has been a brilliant process from start to finish. And I was very impressed that your school district thinks beyond the students and faculty, but really values the voice of everyone in the community. And it proved to me that Lindbergh really is a great place to And it proved to me that Lindbergh really is a great place to learn for all. And you guys can use that if you want. And another thing that I was very impressed by is that the committee had representation from every target, really almost every target market audience that we had. And they were almost at every single meeting. So it was very inclusive. And each committee meeting was incredibly professional. It was very well executed. The presentations were prepared, the breakout sessions and group discussions afterward were compelling and nothing felt rushed, which was really great because I feel like in a lot of those, we're covering a lot of information, you often feel very rushed, but everybody really was able to get their voice heard. And then I think what I am most excited about moving forward is the strategy number one, of course, as a parent, to streamline communication. And I have communicated that to a lot of my friends that are in the private school systems and in public school systems. And they said, just report back to us on that. Like, we need to talk to our schools about that after that. So that's very exciting to me. And the other one would definitely be strategy number four, just creating positive promotion of the district's value to everyone. So not just the students, the parents, the faculty, but our community members, non-parents, seniors. So I just really love all of that inclusivity and I'm happy that we moved to the school district.
Thank you both for sharing your perspectives from your involvement on the committee. So if we move to the next slide, our next step, as you can see, we had our last meeting on Monday and we'll bring this back to you for approval in February. And then the last step here, implementation. So at the end of the plan, we have a roadmap. And this goes month by month and it takes all the recommendations and the strategies and it puts it into tactics. So this is something that my department, we can look at together, we can keep ourselves on task and really make sure that we're meeting what we said we would do in the plan. And then with the creation of that board advisory, bringing them back in for accountability as well, I think is going to be, will be really great. So we are very excited to present this to you. Lori, I'm going to open it up for questions. Do you have anything you'd like to say in closing?
In closing, I just want to say, I wish someone had told me to have my Kleenex box near me. And listening to that feedback from the committee members, it's very, very touching. And I have said this to my own family, wow, this Lindbergh Schools Plan is probably the best we've put together yet. And it's just a real feel-good and I appreciate the comments that were shared here. That means a lot. We are happy to answer any questions that you have. And you should all, you probably know this, but I'm just going to reinforce it. You have the most amazing communications team there and they're ready for this work for you all.
Thank you, Lori. That was very nice of you and we really enjoyed working with you too. This has been a great process. So and thank you to our presenters and our communications department as well, everyone who served with us. So does anyone have any questions for us as we wrap up?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in this because I can see it, I can hear it, I can feel it, how much work was put into this and to really make the district a resource for our community and really have that communication and involvement go both ways. And I know as a parent myself, the good thing is that it is a strength because I'm always like, I know I saw it, but where did I see it? So it's this idea that we do have all of these strengths that we can continue to build on and that we're already here, we're just trying to get up there. And so, yeah, we're just gonna, did you say fly?
I said fly higher.
But anyway, so I just want to say thank you for everyone involved and all the hard work. And yeah, I can't wait to be able to answer that question, like, where did I see it? So let's do this.
Thank you.
I just want to say real quickly, obviously being the newest one on the board, I haven't had as much experience with the district at this level, but I had been involved in parent groups and all of that for many, many years before. And I shared at the beginning when we were in the committee work about how, at least other groups I'd been on, you know, we always often would start out, we're going to work on this, we're going to make these great ideas, brainstorm and have all these things. And then also we're volunteers, but it was just really difficult to get those actionable steps in changing the communication plan. So I don't want to say I was skeptical, but I was kind of, I was cautiously optimistic to see how this would go. And I was so impressed, as the other committee members said, but not but, and, just so impressed with the work we already have. And now with that chart at the end that tells us what we can focus on each month and update, I just, sky's the limit. So thank you for this work.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Okay, I guess we are next. Thank you for just a few minutes tonight. As we've talked about before, human resources with Ally as lead have been studying all of our support staff positions and a comparative study about where they fall within our, not only our K-12 districts, but also where those positions might fall within the private sector and the non-K-12 marketplace. And we've found that it's quite easy to study educators and compare with other school districts, but when comparing classified positions, it's a little more difficult to maybe gather information and align position with position out there in the non-K-12 world. So Ally's going to talk a little bit about where we've been and where we are and where we intend to go in the next couple of months.
Thank you. So I wanted to provide a very brief update. So our timeline has recently shifted. So as Brian shared, the HR department as well as the business department and our classified supervisors have worked really hard the last couple of months to make sure that EMS, that's the company we partnered with, that they have a really clear picture of our support staff roles. So that includes our job descriptions, our salary schedules, as well as a clear understanding of all of the benefits that we offer. So we had a meeting with them on December 19th and in that meeting, they shared some really good data with us where they primarily shared where we rank as far as our support staff roles compared to neighboring school district. So that's great information. Like Brian shared, that's easier for us to get. We now need them to solely focus on comparing our support staff roles to those of the private sector. So we had a meeting with them last week and we kind of refined our parameters, clarified our expectations a little bit. We problem-solved with them through a few roadblocks. And since then, they've already made some really good progress. So we are confident that we will be back in April with the results of this study. And we are excited about what it's shown us so far. We definitely have some bright spots in our salaries and some things to celebrate. And then we definitely have, you know, some room for improvement. So I don't know if you guys have any questions. I know that was very brief, but, okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much, you guys.
Well, teaching and learning is up next, so we'll get over that brief part really quickly. So Dr. Jill Lawson and Dr. Craig Hamby are joining us to start the teaching and learning portion of our agenda. And they have been doing a lot of work around our model of instruction, which really encompasses everything that happens in the curriculum cycle from the beginning of writing curriculum through the instruction into the assessment process, that full loop. So I will turn it over to them to talk about model instruction, what it is and how it's supporting our students.
Hello. Dr. Hamby and I are here to share our teaching and learnings work with the model of instruction. You can go to the next slide. So the purpose of the model of instruction, we also will refer to as the MOI, is to provide a clear and consistent vision for classroom instruction, professional learning and the teacher evaluation process. This document on the screen is the Face Sheet for All Things MOI. At the top in the green bar, there are three overarching categories, feedback, context and content. Within those categories are 10 design areas, all in bold. And under each design area, we have a total of 36 elements. Next slide. This tool will take us into the future for professional learning, auditing potential resources and programs to ensure they align with the model of instruction. It is also a guide for our coaches and mentors to use when supporting teachers, both new and veteran. Overall, the MOI is about having clear and consistent expectations and, excuse me, that we want used in all classrooms to support student learning. So this tool will influence the newly revised teacher evaluation tool that should be coming soon.
So the timeline, just to let you know how we got to where we are right now, in the early 2020s, we began standards-based learning, K through 5. And while we were doing the work of writing proficiency scales and building our priority standards, we kept coming back to this need for clear and consistent practices in the classroom. Fast forward to April of 2024, the district professional learning team, we met in this room and we decided to focus, everyone pre-K through 12, that for this school year, we're going to focus primarily on instructional strategies or effective instructional strategies. Then May of 2024, the teaching and learning team met with HR to discuss a framework for a new teacher evaluation system that would be based upon the new art and science of teaching. In June of 2024, a group of teachers, once again in this room, pre-K through 12, came into work on possible scoring guides for a new evaluation system. As we got to work that day, we realized that we needed a bifurcate, Dr. McKinney. And teaching and learning had decided we were going to develop the model of instruction and then that would be used by HR to determine the teacher evaluation system later. In August of 2024, thanks to the hard work of our instructional coaches, we had a prototype, which Jill showed you a few moments ago, of our model of instruction. And that was developed based on teacher feedback and the new art and science of teaching. The prototype was presented to our building and district administration as the blueprint for professional learning in each building this year. Buildings have used this document to guide the planning of professional learning, the direction of professional growth plans, coaching cycles, learning walks and guidance for new teachers. And as we go, next slide, Colin, into the future, we will use this to audit new programs and curriculum and it will be the backbone of the new teacher evaluation system, which we're not going to open these documents up, but Robot Craig has developed a possible summative and some possible design area rubrics that could be part of the teacher evaluation system. And then next slide, Colin. These are the resources we use. So a lot of the work is from Robert Marzino and John Hetty. And in closing, I would like to say that the MOI meets the parameters of the CIF from the SRSN. What questions do you have?
I'm curious how our staff has kind of taken to this?
They love it. They've, it was the best thing they've ever seen. That was the feedback we got.
I think that, it's all about having clear expectations. You know, everybody wants to do really well. It's easy to do really well when you know what the target is. And this is one of those ways that we can clearly show them what the target is and allow them to jump into it where they feel ready, audit where they are doing really well and identify areas they want to stretch themselves and grow as teachers. So one of the comments from one of our meetings was, this is great, I wish I would have had it years ago.
I was going to say that.
Sorry.
Well, you made a joke, so we moved on. Has there been any negatives or cons from our staff?
You know, it's not a negative, but it's one of the challenges we faced when it was first introduced is when they saw that big document, they were like, wow, where do I begin? And so it was really important for us and the teaching and learning team to tell them, you start where you are ready. So for example, many buildings are going into the overarching category of feedback and saying, this is really what we want to focus in on, is having clear learning targets, using assessments to identify where students are and giving them feedback. And that is going to be our big focus for this particular year. And as a building, that's where they're moving, but a teacher may jump into it and identify a different design area or an element where they want to focus in to just help them personally as professionals. So I would say the challenge is when you get a document like this, it looks overwhelming at first. So it's kind of helping them break it down to see how they can move with it.
No, there's been no negative feedback. Actually, I think what has helped with it is there's nothing new on it. Everything that is on there, we've already been doing for years. It was just putting it all together, taking all our best practices and putting it in one document.
And oftentimes, we talk a lot about research and evidence-based programs, but I think sometimes what we miss are research and evidence-based strategies that we can use in the classroom to help our students. So this is a way to kind of think beyond just programs and also think about just really great, high-yield strategies that help students engage in the learning.
Thank you for clarifying because it was very overwhelming to me and I was like, what is happening here? What is this? So thank you.
We'll go through it with you line by line after the meeting, if you'd like.
Thank you. It is a lot of words, but it feels like it's something that can be used at the individual teacher level, at a department level, at a school level in different ways. And so I like it, but it's a lot of words at first.
I think it's important to know that one of the biggest challenges for school districts is what does effective instruction look like? And now with the hard work, which is awesome, and I've been in multiple school districts and having a document like this, we always talk about, what does that look like in this elementary? Maybe these are important there, but not there, but now we have this document that says, here it is. So when we walk into a third grade classroom at Sappington or a third grade classroom at Concord, we should see these same types of strategies going on. And again, that fidelity piece and that viable curriculum, this document does that. And so I just want to say, great job. This is something that we'll continue to evaluate and to tweak, but awesome. Great job.
And the document that Jill is talking about up there is actually Prototype 7.1. So it's been through a lot of revisions in a half a year.
Did I miss why some of the things are highlighted?
That's my handiwork because Prototype 7.0 doesn't have that, but I've already working on things we might want to change a little bit for next year.
You'll also note that there are some that have hyperlinks. We'll save that for when Colin speaks about AI and how AI is a resource and a tool for our teachers. Thank you, Jill. Craig's going to remain and then Caitlin McGovern is going to join us. One of our ongoing goals is to continue to support our students in early childhood and the transition into kindergarten. So we're having conversations about our early childhood programming and I'll turn it over to the two of them to talk through those conversations.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. My first time in front of you guys. So I'm excited for the opportunity just to share where we are currently at with our work at LACE. I do have some programming ideas to bring forward and just looking for, you know, if any comments, questions or suggestions. These are just kind of the foundation blocks of where we could go. So I will speak to our current areas of focus, the topic of refining our waitlist process and then also our part-day programming and our full-day programming. And while I'm speaking towards this, it's not just my ideas that I'm bringing forward. We created a focus group that had classified, certified staff for both general education and also special school district. And we also had administration part of that team as well. We sent a parent survey where we had 150 families provide their feedback and answer specific questions for our program, but also give us ideas of how we can expand and enhance based on what they're looking for for their children. And then just auditing, since I became building principal in July, of what's going well and what are our growth areas and beginning to have conversations with other principals and directors in the area about what's going well for them. So next slide, we'll kind of focus on what we're currently doing. So a big focus work for us right now is just defining the type of program that we want to create for our community and making sure we can clearly share that with our families. So what experiences our child is going to get into are in our classrooms and also what readiness looks like as they head into the next level of learning. We have been doing a lot of professional learning based around early childhood center, but also making sure we're bringing in new voices and experts in that field to really make sure that we have just the best practices again aligned with what we should be doing. Kind of speaking to the model of instruction, we have been working on our own, still same format as what elementary is doing, but the specific skills and strategies that are embedded shift just a little bit to make it, you know, make sense for the early learners. We also have created proficiency scales. We are finished with social emotional learning and we have that for our two-year-olds all the way to our five-year-olds and have that continuum learning also started for literacy.
So one of the things with the proficiency scales and using the MOI, just trying to make everything just trying to make everything continuous from pre-K as they flow into elementary. And that hasn't always been the case, but we're working hard to catch up and get everything where we'll have that uniformity across the, from the buildings.
So that vertical alignment is really helpful and we've been kind of using also the kindergartens to see, you know, what is that next step of learning and backtracking all the way to the two-year-old learners that we have in our building. The next piece that we've started conversations about is just beginning the necessary steps to become a school of character, which is aligned with the five-year plan for the district. ECE used to have that accolade to add, but no longer does. And so we're just working on getting that back for us. And then also participating in learning walks in other ECE centers to see what's going well and bring that energy and ideas back to our building. So the next focus is our waitlist refinement. So our current reality is as soon as a family has a child, they can put their child on the waitlist for when they turn two and can be part of our program. What's this turned into is that there's no limit to how long a family can be on the list. And so when we look at it and see hundreds of families on there, it's a little overwhelming of, oh, man, we need to really open up tons of spaces. However, it's not the current reality for that school year. And so we really would just like to, we've been doing a lot of research for other centers and many have transferred over to an annual waitlist to where it opens for a certain amount of time for current families, then to new families, but it closes at the end of the year. So we always are looking at, these are the families who need a spot right now. So it gives us a more accurate number. We also have many families who get disappointed when they've been on it for two or three years and that we still don't have a spot for them. So it kind of just refines everything for us to take action. The next piece, I'll kind of talk about our part-day programming. So we have our West location and we also have our Center location. All of our West classrooms right now are part-day and then we have some part-day options at the Center as well. The reality right now is we do not have any afternoon classes at West. We have three classrooms that are empty. And so one of my wonderings and questions I had going in was, how do we fill those spots? And so we, for the parent survey, we asked them, do afternoon classes work for your family? And we're surprised that 48% said yes. And so to me, this says, we have families that we could start to fill and also what other new-to-Linburg families could we get from the community to start filling those spots so that we could have a full functioning AM and PM program? So with this, it goes into some of our suggestions for the next slide. If we were successful in filling our AM and PM classrooms, then we would consider moving to a Monday through Thursday model because when we have the AM classes and PM classes, there's very little time for planning with lunch and everything else that's included. So our ECSE teachers already follow this model where Fridays are their planning days and their PLC days and also opportunities for professional learning. So when we surveyed the families, a large number of them said that this would also work for them, with a few who said that it wouldn't. But really taking in consideration of honoring that planned time for teachers because we know it's important to drive instruction. And then the other consideration that's on there in the yellow would be if we weren't successful in fulfilling those PM classes, still considering the Monday through Thursday transition for our team-taught classrooms because we have two team-taught classrooms with a special school district teacher and a general education teacher, but they don't have any time to plan together and one of our teachers doesn't have any planned time at all. So having that Friday honored for that time would allow them to have the time they need to plan and collaborate with their colleagues. The last thing I'll share is really about our full-day programming, which is where our waitlist numbers come in and kind of what has sparked a lot of conversations. So at the top, you'll see our current waitlist for the different grade levels that we have. And this is for the 2025-2026 school year. So currently for the two and three-year-olds, I have 84 students on the waitlist and I am able to fill up to 48 of those spots. For three, four, I have 86 students on the waitlist, but only 12 spots available if all 48 of those students go to the next grade level. And then for four or five, 82 students are in the waitlist with only 20 spots available. So here you can see we're not able to bring in new families very often, especially as they get older and looking at opportunities just to expand. The other thing that is kind of in my heart and what I'm thinking about is how do we create a more diverse population of students and also get new-to-Linburg families? Because when they come in and they start with us as two-year-olds, they stay and then hopefully are heading into our elementary schools. And so how do we just get more families in? And so on the right-hand side, you'll see some numbers highlighted and that's just showing that for a school year, we're serving a very few minimal of new-to-Linburg families because we start with current families and then into our Lindbergh staff. So just looking at ways. So since considerations on the next slide would be first, if we have more kids, of having more space. And this is, you know, something just to think about. Are we utilizing the center in the best way? Or are there ways that we could repurpose some of the spaces to create more classrooms? Initially, looking at the blueprint, which is not my field of expertise, but potentially one to two more classrooms, which would be 20 to 40 more students off of the waitlist. The next solution isn't really going to get more students off the waitlist, but it would hit that idea of more equitable program and also the diverse population. If we held an X amount of spots for current families and Lindbergh staff and also hold an X amount of spots for new-to-Linburg families, then we can make sure that we are meeting the needs of the community. And then the last idea that you see on the screen currently is turning a two-year-old classroom into a preschool or pre-K classroom because as you saw, when we get to that level of three and four-year-olds, there's only 12 open spots. So it expands the access to those higher-level grade levels, which could be up to 24 more students. However, as you saw the numbers for the waitlist, we have 86 two- and three-year-olds on the waitlist. So it gets rid of one, you know, issue, but, you know, turns into some other conversations. The last idea I have to share with you is just, again, thinking of West and how we have the afternoon classes there that are empty. So moving to a full-day model at West as well, but with no childcare before or after. And so when we surveyed the families, 62% said that this would work for them and this is surveyed to the current part-day families and 38% said no. So what that would do would open up 60 spots from our current waitlist total out of the three grade levels. But those families that said that didn't work for them, we still have part-day options because we have our peer model program. So we have our integrated classrooms where if they needed that AM or PM spot, they could be our peer model and still get the services that they need. So those are the ideas?
So there's a lot of ideas out there. We talked about the waitlist, the schedule, what age students come, part-day, full-day. Caitlin's been on the job for six and a half months. So as we look at doing these, and the Teaching and Learning Department's going to work with Caitlin and her staff over at Early Childhood to come up the best options for our community. But this is not a everything right now. This would probably be little bits over the next three to four years to look at changing all this stuff. So just wanted to make sure that we're not going to do all this this spring necessarily. Maybe, I don't know. What questions do you have?
I have a question or comment. I'm not sure which it is. So at the very beginning of your presentation, you mentioned ECSE. And then you quickly talked about how you have basically one and a half classrooms empty. Well, you have three empty spots, but like one, or three empty classrooms in the afternoon. I'm curious how you've ever discussed our students who are using SSD for Early Childhood Special Ed and how they have access to our program for their other half of the day? Because I've heard from multiple community members that they have wanted their child to stay at our early childhood centers, but it's not allowed. And so I'm curious if that has been a part of this discussion at all?
So just to clarify of having their services like in the morning, but having the option to stay in the afternoon or vice versa?
Yes.
Yes. So that has been an option. It's not a current reality, but yes, definitely something we could add to, you know, consideration. I think a barrier we have right now is because we are able to fill our AM classes and we don't have very many spots. And so if they receive the services in the morning, we don't have a spot to put them in in the afternoon. That's just a part-day without them being, you know, integrated into a classroom who have been there for the rest of the day. So I think that's just a barrier is having services only allowed in the morning then and not having a spot for them in the afternoon.
I just wanted to make sure it was, you know, included in the discussion.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
In two areas, if we were able to get some PM classes going, that could be one of the options. Or the slide that's still up there, if we had full-day classes at West, that would also open up the possibility. All right. Good job. You filibustered.
Great job. Thank you. This time I'd like to welcome Dr. Tracy Bennerick-Humes. We've been doing a lot of work with our gifted instruction. I know that in our compass, we've had some work at the secondary level. We also have some changes that have happened at the state level. So she's going to provide a summary of that and how it impacts the work we are doing in Lindbergh.
All right. Thank you and thank you for having me here. We, I'm going to go over the key features of the new guidelines from the state of Missouri, kind of highlight some of the changes that they have included in those guidelines and then how we're implementing those changes and kind of what's on our radar. So these changes have gone into effect as of November 30th, 2024. So impacting us really the second semester and then going forward. So you can go on to the next slide. So we, prior to the new guidelines, the state of Missouri did put into effect a mandate that all districts that are identifying 3% or more of their students as gifted must actually provide services to those gifted students. This really doesn't change much for Lindbergh because we've already been doing that. So if we are a district that is larger than 350 students and there are districts that are smaller than that, those services must be provided by a gifted certified teacher. All of our teachers here at Lindbergh are gifted certified. And so if there was a case where we were not, there's a process to do that. So in addition, the district must have a board-approved identification policy that is in line with DUSSEY's recommendations and I'll talk about those recommendations in a minute. An appeal policy and an acceleration policy. That's not really a change, but that is a key feature that they have continued to have. We have all of those policies. Additionally, in the past two years, DUSSEY has developed with several teachers and gifted specialists, Missouri Gifted Learning Outcomes to guide the programming and curriculum for a gifted program. So these are not a set of standards. They're not necessarily a curriculum, but they are a starting point for schools to develop their own curriculum. And we are using the gifted learning outcomes to guide our curriculum. We'll be going into a curriculum writing year next year and we'll continue to use those gifted learning outcomes for our curriculum development. But this past, the past two years, we've been using those to develop proficiency scales for our gifted programs, both in PEGS and in LEAP. The state requires that 150 minutes of gifted instruction is provided per week. That's not a change, but that continues. It also recognizes the challenge of that at middle school. And so that can be an average over the weeks of the month and we work to provide that. And then there are three key types of programming. The resource room teacher, and that could be either in the building of a school or it can be a program like ours where students go to another school to visit their resource room teacher. And that would be our elementary LEAP program. It can be a special class teacher, so like an elective or a class that meets specifically for LEAP and that would be, or specifically for gifted, and that would be our middle school LEAP program. And then the gifted resource teacher model, which is our Lindbergh High School program. And we've expanded that this year and we added that position with Mr. Vallée doing the additional gifted resource teacher. One thing of interest is the different recommended, so if you could go back one, thank you. The different recommended amount of caseloads for each of those teachers and programs. We tend to be a little bit over those caseload recommendations, but they are recommendations. They are not requirements. Okay, now you may go to the next slide. All right. So some of the changes is really, some of the changes are really the push for universal screening to be finding students that may have not been recognized for gifted programming when it was just a referral process. So the state is really pushing the universal screening, whether that is at one grade level or several grade levels. We universally screen grades one through eight. So we do a lot of universal screening. They recommend that 20% of our population move on to further testing. And I would say at one particular point, it's about 6%. So let's say when we look at all of our third graders, about 6% go on to additional testing. But then we're going to look at them again year after year. So over time, we do get that 20%. And if you look at our current third grade, we're actually serving 16.8% of our students are actually receiving gifted services. So we are definitely hitting that, through that process. And then districts should also consider traditionally underrepresented students or hard-to-identify students and make sure we have a policy in place to identify those students. The, some of the changes now is that in the past, the Director of Gifted Education for the state could approve any alternative identification policies. DUSSEY is now recommending that the local legal council, so the district's legal council, approve any of these policies that are targeted for finding our hard-to-identify students and then submit that to DUSSEY to be approved for their core data system. So the big recommendation is whatever policy you have in place, check with your local legal council. And then it also says that you can only designate certain subgroups and I've listed those there. So this would be students with free and reduced lunch status, students with IEPs and English language learners. So that is something we'll talk about in the next slide, some of the changes there. And that any academic scores that you are using for identification need to be at the 95th percentile or higher. But you can choose what scores those are. So you can choose what subtests are allowed, what scores you're going to use for that criteria. And they also recommend that we look at another area. So creativity, problem-solving, or reasoning ability as part of the identification process. You can go on to the next slide. Okay, so the way that we've implemented these, every time you go to that slide, I think my computer's going to automatically do that and it doesn't. So we are doing a universal screener at second grade that hits that reasoning requirement. So that is the Naglieri assessment and it's a non-verbal puzzles and pattern reasoning tool. So every second grader will have that opportunity to be screened that way that determines if we go on to the IQ test. We did discontinue the use of the racial demographic as part of our alternative identification policy as recommended by DUSSEY. That's no longer a recognized subgroup. And then we do district standardized test screening. So we do use that 95th percentile as part of our standard screening pathway. And then that is in either reading or math. And then we look for the other score to be at the 84th percentile in the other content area because we want students that, especially our elementary students, if they're leaving their school day for a whole day of the week, we want them to be proficient enough to be able to handle that demand. We also have been looking at students who are in the 90-90 area to see if they should be looked at for potential enrollment because they're very close. They're highly performing in both areas. And ideally, they would take a second screener since they are not at that 95. So we're kind of playing around with that. We haven't settled on that. We're sticking right now at the 95 and 84. And then our alternative screening pathway is the 84 and 50th and that has been approved by both our legal council and DUSSEY. And those are the subgroups that we use that pathway for. Now, the thing to remember is that they still have to have an IQ at the 95th percentile. There's been no change there. And as I mentioned, the second grade reasoning ability screener. So that is kind of the overarching thing, but I did dig into some data today and I'm not going to give you a whole lot. But just kind of interestingly enough, I wanted to see how our percentage of students have, who we've served over time has changed. So I went back to 2016 and we were serving 11.78% of our population. And then around 2021, we dipped to 9.8. So right there at COVID, we dipped a little bit and we're now serving 10.93% of our population in gifted programs. So it really hasn't changed too much over time. It's kind of gone up and down. But of interest, in 2016, we were serving 12.9% of our students had IEPs. The following year in 2017, it was 13%. We are now serving 17%. So 17% of the students in our gifted program do have IEPs. So our population has changed a bit as we've been very intentional about having an alternative policy for identification. I thought that was interesting. I thought that was interesting. I didn't pull every year, but a couple of years.
Well, I had a question about the IEP section, because you have it listed as the alternative screening pathway with like the 84 and 50% score. But does that apply to IEPs? Because I thought a child that has a 50% score would not qualify for an IEP under certain disability labels.
It depends on the child, whether they would qualify or not for an IEP with a 50th percentile. Some do, some don't.
Is there any room for, you know, if it, there's, sometimes it's hard to get your child an IEP or a 504, and the teacher might recognize that they probably need one, the parent might recognize they probably need one, but that process can take years. So is there any room for some, for any teacher or anyone to identify this as a child who probably should have an IEP, or are they just not going to get identified?
Well, I think the one thing to remember is that we are doing universal screening at every grade level, and most districts do not. Most districts do universal screening maybe at second grade and fourth grade, and that's it. Like, those are those two entry points, and if you don't enter at that point, there's no opportunity. So we're very intentional about making sure we're going to look at that child every year. So whether they have an IEP, or they start to develop and have some of the, any concerns addressed over time, they may be caught under the standard pathway the following year. So we're very careful to make sure we're giving multiple entry points, so whether it's through the alternate pathway and having the child qualify for an IEP or 504, or monitoring that child throughout their time. And a lot of times when teachers reach out to me and say, you know, "The child didn't qualify, but I really do think they're gifted," we talk about things they can do in the classroom to support the child. We look at maybe why they didn't qualify, and talk about ways to work with that child outside of the classroom, too, talk to the parents. So there's a lot of conversations that happen around this child and what we can do to best support their child.
I will also add, that's one of the benefits of that second grade NAGLIER assessment, because for students who may have some learning differences, who the achievement tests might be more limited in terms of showing what they can do, that assessment will give a different perspective on skill sets.
So the, and the other thing to remember, too, is when I say, you know, we're serving 10.9% of our whole population, that takes into account Kaitlyn's students and all of our students. But when we look at grade level, like I said, we're serving 16.8% of our third graders, 17% of our fourth graders, 19% of our fifth graders. So almost 20% of our fifth graders are coming to us on Mondays, and then 16.3% of our sixth graders. The state represents that you serve 5% of your population. Many districts like ours serve more than 5%. Ladue is very similar to us, they're usually around 12%. So we have to also remember that the more that, like, we are serving a lot of kids in our district, and we are identifying a lot of kids that need our program.
Do you keep track of how well the students who are identified in an alternate path perform compared to the ones who are identified in a standard path?
I don't have the data right now off the top of my head, but we have dug into that before, and we have noticed some concerns and some successes. It just, it kind of goes back to depending on the child. We, we do have, the teachers have noticed that they have to kind of think of some different approaches to make sure that they're meeting the needs of all the kids. But we've also caught some kids that just really excelled that would not have been caught if we didn't have the alternative pathway.
I had one more question. On the last slide, with the state level changes, the last bullet point about creativity, problem-solving, and reasoning should be considered? I know that we do that second grade, the reasoning test. How are creativity and problem-solving kind of used?
So that's, on the state guidelines, that's a bulleted list of things that you can use as sort of other ways. So right now, we don't have creativity as an element for identification. I, and I will say, though, that we've been exploring options. Creativity is a challenging thing to assess. So there are some assessments out there, a lot of them have to be hand-scored, so the manpower of doing that. I did attend a session at the National Association of Gifted Children Conference in November about an AI-assisted creativity assessment, but it only literally has one problem that the students do. They have to create flowers with petals, and it assesses their creativity with creating these flowers. So it didn't really win me over, but I'm continuing to investigate.
Okay, so that's just an area we're kind of working on some more?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
And then I kind of have something for Tara about it.
Sure.
And it's back to the IEP with the alternative pathway, because I feel like we passed either a procedure, well, we don't pass procedures, but there was either a procedure or a policy that I remember talking to you about, and you told me that that did not apply to IEPs?
Tracy and I were talking about that the other day as we were, as we were planning for this. So we've got to dig in on what that was, because that was in my memory as well, so that was part of our planning and conversation for this.
Okay, because to me, if you score 50% on an achievement test, you're, that's average, right? Like, that's...
Well, in the example you had given when we were talking, you know, the students who have like a reading disability that's fairly significant, right? If your, if your math ability is showing that you clearly have a skill set, an achievement set, but your disability is getting in the way of being able to demonstrate your performance on the other one, that, where does that land?
Right, because like, my thought went to, like, a student to receive like specific learning disability in reading needs to score below the 25th percentile in one of those reading tests to qualify, so they would never have access. So I just want to clarify.
Yeah, we had that same conversation. So as we're tightening up some of these things, even Tracy and I were talking today about some additional feedback she got from the gifted director at the state level. So there's a couple of other pieces, too, where we have some opportunities to expand. But again, I want to go back to that, that point, and this is one that is an ongoing conversation for us. You know, when you're talking about the numbers and the percentages of students that we are assessing, we've kept it as, let's look at those national norms, because our students are still represented at the national level. Many districts start to make local norms, and we've tried to really avoid that so that we can just serve kids based on needs as opposed to, as opposed to numbers.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, if we switched to local norms, we would lose a lot of our students receiving services. And I will tell you that there have been a couple of students, so we used to do one score or the other, you know, so 95 in one content area. We have had, in the past few years, it's not a lot, but about two or three students who we had to encourage to take a break from LEAP because it was actually causing a detriment for them to be out of their classroom for a day. One of our students needed Wilson services, and that's a five-day-a-week program. Thankfully, that student was able to come back after a semester because his reading scores went up so much that we could handle LEAP and those services. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Moving on to high school programming, some exciting updates from Dr. Covato, Dr. Cochran, Dr. Fick, and Jessica Franklin about a grant that we have received and opportunities we're going to be able to provide to students. And I'll leave it at that, I'll let them drop the surprise.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am so excited to sit in front of you guys tonight to talk about this grant, just beyond thrilled. So let's just dig into it. What is the grant? So in the fall, this school year, DUCY sent out an email to superintendents and CTE coordinators about a new grant opportunity. And that new grant opportunity for CTE had some parameters, and it was titled "Limited Access." So what does "limited access" mean? That means your school district had to have some sort of barriers to students enrolling into a career tech educational program, but not just any career tech educational program. It had to be based on MERRICK Occupational Projections. So what that is, is that's basically the hub for the state of Missouri of what occupations look like and what employment statistics look like in regard to industry projections. So you couldn't just write a grant based off of a program you really wanted. It had to be a program that addressed a shortage in the job industry and the workforce. And what did that entail? So part of that grant was, the total allocation given to the state of Missouri was $2 million. And part of that grant was, you were to write and submit a proposal for a program, and what funding would you need? So the maximum funding you could ask for was $400,000 to start the program. Very excited to tell you tonight, we are one of six school districts in the state of Missouri, and we are, I believe, one of the only ones that received the full $400,000 to start a new program. So yeah, I'm very excited, very, very excited. That does require, it is a 75% state-funded, 25% district-funded match, which I'm already working with our finance office and talking with Dawn. Yesterday, we met, and we've got some other meetings in progress. So excited for this team tonight to tell you about a program that we are going to start in a few short months. Next slide. So just, again, just to touch base on the purpose, the purpose of the grant had to address limited access, so meaning programs that our students were not able to get into. And we do have data for that that supports, so the team will share with you tonight. And again, that focused on those career fields that were a shortage, and health science is definitely a shortage in, all over the United States, but specifically in the state of Missouri for industry projections. Our goal, like I said, this year is to start a grant, or start implementing the grant in the fall. Next slide.
So I'm going to explain the need a little bit, and the need as far as the need within the United States and the need within our own district. It won't surprise you that there is a high need for nurses in St. Louis and Missouri and in the nation. The American College of Nursing estimates there's going to be a 6% increase in nursing staff over the next 10 years, and that there are about 193,000 openings for nursing, for RN nursing, a year due to retirement. So the demand is there, the industry is growing, and they have large numbers of retirements and needing new nurses to fill that gap. And so the need for, for trained nurses is growing within our district. You can see from the slideshow that we have increasing numbers of students that are applying to the South Tech CNA program. And so that is an entry-level nursing certification that students can get at South Tech. Right now, at Lindbergh, that is our only avenue for students that want to pursue this type of career path, which, South Tech is great, and they do fantastic things, but South Tech also serves, services 22 other districts. So the amount of students that they can receive is capped and limited to serve all the other districts that they partner with. So another barrier for a lot of our students is students that do enroll in South Tech, it fills up four of their PRPs, so it takes over half of their schedule for transportation and the time to go over to South Tech. So many students just can't fit that within their schedule, which is a limiting barrier. So it's competitive to get into that program. We have students every year that want to go over to the CNA program at South Tech but are unable to due to enrollment limits. Next slide, please.
Okay, so in bringing this program in-house, one of the benefits that we're going to have for our students is that we're going to be able to reduce some of those barriers in access to program to having CNA certification whenever they're graduating high school. And for the state and the healthcare field, one of the benefits is that we're going to increase the number of people who can be certified, because with that nursing shortage, there's also a shortage of nursing educators. So, you know, you guys saw on the last slide that there are more students interested than there are students who can get into the program. So in adding, you know, the ability to do this in-house, we'll be able to help more students get this access. And then for our students who are going into the nursing field after high school, it's going to let them have a hands-on experience that is going to be so important for them as they're going into the nursing field. And it'll give them a leg up on their resume for them versus other new grads whenever they go to get their nursing job. And in addition to that, one of the things that is so awesome for our students is in having that CNA and working while they're in nursing school, with some facilities, they would be able to take advantage of tuition reimbursement through the facilities that they're working for during nursing school to help pay for that nursing school.
So speaking to some of the opportunities that will be created by this program for our students and for the community, we will, we will create a partnership with a long-term care facility where our students will serve their clinical hours. And so that, that will be an opportunity for our students to be able to get an education in professionalism, in patient care. It'll also be a win-win, because then those long-term care facilities are always looking for help. They're looking for assistance and staff. And so that will be the work-based opportunity that we're going to be shooting for, for our students. For post-secondary collaboration, one thing that we're working towards, Ms. Franklin and I were at Spark over at Parkway today, and looking at some of the programs they have around CNA and health sciences as well. And so the plan moving forward is to offer dual credit for students that are enrolled in this program as well. South Tech does this already through Missouri Baptist. They offer their students eight hours of college credit through Missouri Baptist in anatomy and physiology. And so that's something that we want to add into this program as well to create some post-secondary opportunities and college credit opportunities for our students enrolled into this program.
And on the last bullet there, we feel that this program will complement perfectly some of the other programs that we're already offering kind of in the health fields, the CTE area in particular. We have been working with South Tech for a long time. This has been, the Certified Nursing Program over there has been one of the most popular programs among our students, but again, they have limited space. CAPS is still a relatively new program at the high school, and serves our students really well, but also limited space. That one, that program is really more for students who are maybe looking to advance pretty far into the medical field. And then we, of course, have the EMT program that's relatively new, that is a little more specific. Obviously, whenever you add a new program, one of the questions you ask is, will this take away from some of the other programs that we've created? But we really think this will, will actually fit perfectly for some of the students who obviously are not getting into the Certified Nursing Program at South Tech. We have a thriving biomedical engineering program as well through Project Lead the Way. That is a large and robust, one of the most popular programs we have at the high school. Like a lot of four-year programs, you see students tend to matriculate out as competition and choices become greater. And we think that maybe some of our students who are opting out of biomedical in the last couple of years might be attracted maybe to a program like this to put some of those skills to practice. So it's, it's going to be a perfect fit, I think, for, I've actually been fortunate to see a program like this at multiple schools and have thought for a long time that this is something that we can do in-house at our school. Next slide, Colin.
Okay, so with this two-year program, the students will have class time so that they can learn all of the skills that they're going to need, the terminology that they'll need, and the content that will prepare them so that they can sit for the certification exam after the program has concluded. And then along with that classroom learning, they'll also have the hands-on experience that they kind of touched on already with some skills labs and some clinical time within the facilities for those hands-on experience. And then at the end of the two years, they will actually get to sit for the certification exam.
So just some real quick nuts and bolts here. You have to be 16 years old to go into the Certified Nurse Program so that you can complete the program in time to be able to get your CNA certification when you're done. So they're going to have to be juniors to start the program out. To your program, the first year will have two, perhaps two hours. So as we said before, South Tech is four PRPs, so this is, will be much more accessible for our students that are interested in this program. The first two years is in-class learning, and so a lot of hands-on lab work, learn that apply, type of critical thinking, interpersonal relationships with dealing with patients, working with patients. Students should get a CPR certification and an OSHA certification through this process of... Students uh should get a CPR certification and an OSHA certification uh through this process uh of of in-class work. And then uh year two will be uh, it will take up three of their preps. Uh, and that's largely the clinical time. You'll have, those students will have one day um in-class. And then the rest of the time, uh, they'll be at their long-term care facility earning their 100 clinical hours that they need to 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 log uh to be able to qualify for the for the CNA test.
And to wrap it all up here, we have been meeting weekly and bi-weekly since we found out we received the grant. Because like I said, it's a program that will start here in the fall. Um, we have, they went on a site visit today. Um, they are in the Parkway School District. We have one planned for South Tech and Pattonville here in the next week, so a quick turnaround. Um, marketing will occur next week, next Thursday night during curriculum night to recruit students. And then also, we're talking about the course or the program in the science classes and in biomed courses also. So to recruit those students. Um, we honestly see it filling up pretty fast because you're only allowed 15 spots. And it's it's a well-sought-after program, obviously, from the numbers the last couple of years. Next week, we will post a job posting for a part-time instructor for year one. Year two, obviously, will become a full-time position. A sustainability plan. Um, what that will entail is what's so exciting is we received enough money to start the entire program from ground up, um, from state funding. And then the next school year, you can reapply for the grant. And my hopes are for grant reapplication, I'm going to be able to apply for C for EMT. So to transfer the district costs from EMT to be grant-funded. Um, so that that's our goal next uh for next school year, since this year we took up mo- most of it just to start the program from the ground up. That's it. Does anyone have any questions?
So now that we will have this in-house, will we also still be sending some students to South Tech?
Yes.
We get to take advantage of both stuff?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, all opportunities.
Yeah, really, the number of students that that are turned away from South Tech, more than will fill up uh the 15 slots. We're we're limited to 15 slots because we're going to have 15 students per instructor, uh, Certified Trainer Nurse. Uh, and so we had 16, I believe, turned away last year, so that would, you know. And and I expect that more students will apply for this in South Tech because the students will be able to stay on campus. They're not going to have to leave if they have athletics or activities after school. It'll just be something that is uh a lot easier for them to to be able to manage. Uh, because it is a barrier because some students, th- they don't, they don't want to leave campus. They want to stay at Lindbergh. They like being at Lindbergh with their friends and their teachers and and they and they would prefer this. And so that's a limiting factor for South Tech as well, which that'll be eliminated.
I'm super excited and uh I have so many things I want to share, but I know we have a little bit of time. Um, so I think let's start to prepare for year two because you're going to have more than 15. You're probably going to have 50, so um maybe another building, Dr. Lake, you know, on nursing, EMT, IO-med building, something like that. Uh, you know, SAU Edwardsville is adding a whole new building on their campus just for nursing. So um, I'm going to cry because it hits home so so much. My daughter could be out in three, but she has to stay four because she can't get any experience. And this would have helped her to do that, so thank you.
That's okay, because I cried when I got the email. Because I couldn't believe we got the entire amount.
We shared that together.
Yes, absolutely.
I uh have a question. Um, I know that like we've, SSD just doesn't have the space for a lot of their, like to expand their programs and allow the students that are applying to attend. Is there a possibility or has there been discussion that if a district is offer, like, will they not allow people to apply if that district offers a similar program?
That has not been a conversation at all. Um, we um, Dr. Lake and I met with um Dr. Macklin from SSD about South Tech and how we can get creative about y- using programs around other high schools in the area to maybe think differently to um ensure that those lottery systems aren't closing doors for kids. Um, I don't know if there's been further conversations among superintendents, but there are definitely ideas and solutions being thrown out there to ensure that we can continue to grow these opportunities for students.
Okay, that, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, so the idea would be a hub. So for instance, our drone aviation program, we could even expand that to say that kids from Kirkwood or Webster, you know, we have two sections of it. So again, SSD has the ability to get the CTE funding and has the funds to do that. So instead of making everybody go to South Tech in one place in its limited spaces, then, you know, maybe there's another CNA program at Kirkwood High School where kids in this area. And then in Ferguson, there might be one, or Jennings, or just we we in our real-world learning cohort um conversation that we're leading, um, a part of the group that's facilitating that with all the superintendents is, you know, how do we create leveraged programs that districts already have and expand them to open them up to other um students from other districts? So we we are in those conversations for sure.
If there are more students who apply for this than there are 15 spaces, how is the decision going to be made as to who gets in?
We we were talking about that today, actually, of 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 putting putting together uh an application process uh for students uh to apply. You know, and and also informing students of 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 what's required for them uh to be able to do what they do have. They are going to be off-site a lot and 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 there might be some self-selection of students out uh for that uh as well. But yeah, I mean, it's, we we want to offer as in many classes to kids that that wanted as possible and expanding it is is definitely something that if 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 the need is there, I'd love to see that happen. Uh, we're getting quite the medical hub at the high school at this point between EMT, biomed and 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 CNA. So um, but yeah, we will have to uh have to have to uh figure out a method for that.
And then my second question was, is there time in the day for them to continue in biomed and CNA? Or, you know, the, any of them, or do they just have too many classes?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, the, yeah, so like junior, it's two two preps. I mean, it it would, are they in band? Do they take them out of, you know? So it would be, it would be a choice situation, but you know, you have your four cores, then you're going to have your three preps. And junior, this takes two, so they could, they could take a biomed or something like that as well.
I'm really excited about this. I think this is fantastic, so good work.
All right, thank you. And we have one final um component of tonight's board workshop. We've been having a lot of ca- uh conversations about artificial intelligence. As you know, you approved a policy back in June. We've been having conversations with staff. It even came up at the MSBA conference. So um Dominic and Colin are going to talk about artificial intelligence in Lindbergh.
Uh, thank you for letting us share some of the things that we're doing around AI. Um, I wanted to start with this quote uh here. It says, uh, uh, AI is not going to replace humans, but humans with AI are going to replace humans without AI. I don't quite agree with the first part. I do think there will be some jobs that AI will mostly replace. But the second part is uh is why it's important for us to incorporate AI into what we're doing here at Lindbergh now. Uh, we know that AI is going to be used in the workforce and and employers are going to be looking for those skills. Given the option to choose between someone with AI skills to help automate tasks, analyze data to make better decisions and spark new ideals, or someone without, uh, they will definitely choose a person that has those skills and our students need to be prepared for that. This will not only prepare them for the future, but as Colin's going to show, he's going to show how it's going to, how they're using it right now sort of to prepare them for uh what they're doing today in classroom today. Uh, I've also seen a similar quote, um, that AI will not replace teachers, but teachers with AI are going to replace teachers without. I don't quite agree with that one. I do think that teachers need to be in front of students and uh that direct instruction is needed, so. Uh, but I do agree that teachers with AI are going to uh be more valuable than teachers not using it. And one of the things that will make them more valuable is there's, there's studies that show that teachers spend about 15 hours a week doing like administrative tasks, doing lessons, things like that. Um, if AI was able to just reduce that in half or just get some hours back, that would, that would allow our teachers to spend more time with direct instruction with the students. So that's why it's important for us to to really look at tools, uh, look at tools and get professional learning for our teachers so they can use AI. So I'll turn it over to Colin. I also want to thank Colin for all of the work that he does. He's really passionate about AI, so uh it really benefits Lindbergh and I would, I want to thank him for all his work.
So we're going to start on this slide here with this enormous number. So if we look back to uh last May, the second week of last May, we turned AI chat by securely on. From May to yesterday, that was the number of how many questions our students have asked. There are some teacher questions in there, but that's our student questions. If we updated that number, I would not be shocked if we went up by 10,000 to 20,000 more, sometimes in a day, just the rate of questions kids ask. And we're going to show some of those in a moment. So this is what we're trying to help our students with. On the left, you're going to see a picture that that is how we started using AI. In other words, we would ask a question similar to like we would Google something and kind of sit back, see the result, and then move on. What we're trying to transition to is that next picture of being the human in the loop. While we ask the question, that it is like a gathering of people in the room to help us try to figure out what we're trying to solve, what we're trying to think through. And so those are the things we're helping our students uh achieve. So in the very beginning of this school year, um, the high school AP seminar and AP research classes, the teachers, the English teachers called us in and said, hey, uh, AP is allowing us or allowing the students to use AI within these parameters. Could you come in and help us figure that out with the students? And so this document that you see up there, in the upper left, there is a link um that will go to the AP guide. And it's like 170 pages or so, but inside there, there's the AI section. And so what we did is we took the section, and you can see it here. We edited only a little bit and then shared that with the students. So they have like seven phases of work. And then in the center there, you're going to see the acceptable use. And the only thing we changed in this document and what you see below is we gave them a little bit of a prompt. And then in the far right, we talked about the non-acceptable uses. Or that's if you use AI, you would earn a zero versus, you know, a three, four, or five. So when we uh taught those classes, in addition to a lot of the other high school cla- classes, we were showing them a prompt. How do you properly construct a prompt? Kind of going back to that one picture of being a passive user of AI versus a, you're being the human in the loop. How do you set and structure a a proper prompt? And we color-coded it. So if you look at the very top, we taught them, you need to first introduce yourself to the AI. So who are you? And so if you see here, it's a high school student, so it's going to start narrowing it down. Then we live in St. Louis because growing up in Minnesota, spending some time in California, you know, we explain things differently, but it's geographic, so it may pull in some things for the arch, et cetera. And then now it says you're in an AP seminar class. So again, it's going, okay, so you're in high school, but you're probably, AP Sam is probably an older student and you've opted into that class, so you're a different type of a student. And then it's showing you that I'm struggling with something. The green is very important because now you're telling the AI who it should be, um, so giving it a persona. So you're an AI ethicist, but also you specialize in education. The N part is really important because when we take off the, you've been a teacher for 30 years and you're helpful, the response is going to be different. In other words, you've been around students for a long time. You understand how they, how they struggle and how you should talk to them. The orange is what I'm struggling with. And the red and the bottom is the game changer. So that is something we discovered and we struggled with for a little while, but we added that in there. For example, if um, you could cross out Fortnite and put in whatever you're interested in or whatever your child is in, or whatever they're interested in. So maybe it's Fortnite, maybe it's um soccer, whatever it could be. But what that's going to do though is explain the difficult concept in terms and ideas that they're really familiar with. So their learning becomes sticky that way. But that's not enough. To to take it up a notch, then at the very end, asking it to now re-explain it completely as I'm six years old. Now re-explain it completely as I'm 12. So in a snap, you have three different ways to approach this difficult topic and that fast. So every single student can do it that way. They can approach it from their point of view and uh gain an understanding at a much higher level, much faster, so they can get to what's important, that core concept and those ideas. So it's hard to see, but I'm going to explain a couple of things here. Again, this is, this, this is blowing my mind at how our kids are now adapting, uh, how some of our kids are adapting to using AI and how to talk to it. The one on the right is um just from the other day, and it was a student asking for, can you give me some practice problems? And then, you know, math is putting some words in there. It was being too wordy. So the student asked, could you refine that for me a little bit and take out some of the words just to give me the practice problem so I could get better at this math? The one on the left uh is a fourth grade student and I am interested in hiring that student to help us because, one, also, it's uh my my children would never clean up after themselves. But let me explain this a little bit. So the student asks, um, how do I make a scrambled egg for my cat? I'm not sure why, but I was like, ooh, this is an interesting prompt. They go into, now, how do I cook it? And much like us, we probably crack an egg and there's a little bit of a shell in there and they're like, how do I get that shell out? That's a really good question. So um, they they got the shell out and then they cooked the egg. And like many of us, now there's um uh egg remnants in the pan, so how do I clean that? Uh, first, and again, my my students, or my children would never do that. Uh, could I use Dawn soap? That's a really good question. Could I use a scrub daddy? Absolutely. Then it goes on to, now, how do I introduce this scrambled egg to my cat? And it goes on, this is a really long prompt, so I I chunked it out of there. So the 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 child put the, eventually put the egg into the uh her dish, the cat's dish, and then said that now the cat goes up to the dish and starts pawing near the ground. She's explaining, this is the cat behavior, what does this mean? And the AI goes on to explain, you know, here are some reasons why that is. And so that is, if we look back in May to what we're looking at now, the use of AI is is really expanding and they're going much deeper with their knowledge and their understanding. This is a a um, a document that we were sharing back and forth between us and the seventh-grade teachers over at Truman. So we refined this as we went on, but it was, how do we, kind of their prompt was, how do we get the high school writing center in our classroom? As our students are writing, there's one of me and 20 plus of you. How do we help them really, uh, how do we give them a a writing tutor on the side? Because the AI chat by securely won't write your paper for you, but it will be, it'll act as like that writing coach. So we took the rubric from the teachers and we played with it for a little while and we got down to some very specific, good prompts that are um pulled off of the rubric. So some, one of the things are, some of the students were having trouble with is switching between first person and third person and back and forth. And for some of the seventh-grade writers, like, I I don't really understand what you mean by, you know, I I I think my paper looks fine. But developing a small prompt to help them evaluate the paper and then have the AI nudge them along in the right way, it was a really fundamental shift. And also, the teachers felt really good to say, you know, there's one of me and I want to help every student where they are as fast as possible and this is helping them do that. Create the writing center, not that we should get rid of that, but a writing center inside the classroom based upon exactly what they're working on is pretty impressive. So going back to what um Craig and Jill were talking about is the MLI simulator. And this to me is, I'm super excited. So we're going to shift from students down now to uh staff members. So if we could like peel the layer off and look underneath, our MLI is uploaded. We we made, um, we took ChatGPT and we made our own AI out of it. Uh, it's called the GPTs. So if we could peel the layer back, the MLI is inside of this. In addition to that, we put um Marz- you know, some of Marzano's work. We've explained what our district goals are. We've explained that we're doing student-centered coaching. We put a lot of information in there. And then now uh now this wrapper on top of it. So if I was a high school teacher and I typed in, and I'm a high school teacher, I'm teaching social studies and I want um to increase my student engagement, that's what I'm working on, how do I get started? So what it's going to do is pull from not only our MLI, but the best part parts of um of Marzano and start to piece together some great action steps the teacher could follow. But because I said high school, it's also going to say, hey, Katie Johnson is your high school or your instructional coach at the high school and here's her email. So it's pulling in additional information to really help that high school teacher. We've also showed them that you can type the word summarize and it's going to summarize the entire conversation down into one small chunk. So we could, I could keep that for myself, or I could send that to Katie and say, hey, Katie, this is what I'm working on. Uh, how could you help me achieve this one piece or whatever? And then if we move to the admin side, um, so let's say I was your principal and I was watching you in your, in your, teaching your lessons. I was, you know, in a Google Doc, I'm typing everything I see, redact the student information and any uh parent, uh, teacher name I might have. I can load it into the MLI simulator and then it's going to start to um chunk down what, um, like, okay, we're talking about uh student engagement, so it's going to start to put it in those words and in the format that the MLI is. like, okay, we're talking about student engagement. So it's gonna start to put it in those words and in the format that the MLI is in. But also being able to type in, give me one actionable piece of feedback that I can give this teacher. And so now it's not only gonna summarize what I just saw and I can send that to the teacher, but it gives them a great piece of feedback that they can act upon that is linked to the MLI. So this is a, an enormous time saver and it can really get us down to what we're looking for. This is something we worked on over break and, uh, so this is new that not, not all teachers see this yet. We worked on this over break and during the snow days, but going back to when we told the teacher or the, um, the, the students to say, uh, tell the AI who it is, we're building thicker personas like this. So let's say we're getting into, um, looking at helping, um, creates our curriculum design. So what you can do is cut and paste this and put it into the, the AI. And it's gonna greatly increase, um, what the AI knows and what the output is going to be. And so it's gonna help them get down to say curriculum design. We have one for data analysis. We have a number and student engagement. So we're building these for staff to help them really get the best out of not only the MLI, but also how do we, uh, achieve these certain topics? And finally, this last one here, um, is something we did just before break. This is Notebook LM. This is specifically for, uh, this one we built for our high school science teachers. They're getting together six through twelve science and we're looking at all the science curriculums together. And there's a, I didn't realize how many science things we do at the high school and there's a lot in there. So we, if we look on the far left, this is a Google tool. We loaded all of our science curriculums in there and the MLI. In the center, you have your traditional, um, like AI, I can start asking questions. One of them I was thinking about tonight was, we're looking at the CNA program. I could type in there, um, I could load some CNA things in there and say, hey, we're gonna do a CNA program. How could I get my sixth, seventh and eighth grade kids ready? Or what do I need to maybe, what language do I need to change? Is there something I could add to the sixth, seventh and eighth to get them ready for the CNA or the other pathways we have? Now we could page through a lot of documentation, but you can get to the point in a snap here. Can ask a lot of questions that we have discovered and pulled up a lot of great information based upon what the AI can do with these documents. That's neat, but it goes a step further. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, you can click the little load button. What that's gonna do is take all those documents we see on the far left-hand side. Like it would take us hours and hours and hours to read. And in about a minute or less, it creates a twenty-four minute podcast. If I played a chunk for you, you're gonna swear that those are real human beings reading back and forth. It's giving you a, a high level of like talking about all of our science curriculums. This is a great way. It's like eating a, um, you know, an appetizer before you go to dinner. You know, getting the good flavors of what's happening in the curriculum. So just think of a new teacher also, um, well, I'll get to the new teacher thing in a second. But, um, it's giving you a high level ta, uh, in, in information about what these curriculums are. So that's a great way to kind of introduce what we're about to do today. But they've added a new feature as well. Going back to the CNA thing, I can click a button and enter the conversation. I can pass them a note to say, now you're talking about all the curriculums. I really just want you to talk about CNA and it changes the conversation in real time. Katie Johnson and I are gonna be building some of these tools for our new teachers for next year. So think of it as that if you're a brand new teacher for whatever curriculum, you have a notebook like this with all of our curriculums loaded to it. And so now I can start to ask questions, questions on the fly during my class time or planned time. Working with my mentor, I can get better knowledge and understanding of the curriculum based upon what's here. And so that is where, um, that is where we're, we're gonna stop for tonight. We have, um, a lot of other things, uh, planning already for the high school. We're doing some things for PAC. We're doing some things for elementary, but that is our, um, from May, second week of May to now, that is a high level of what we're doing with AI. So we're here to answer any of your thoughts or questions.
This is all amazing, first of all. Um, is this all inside, what platform is this in?
Well, this one is, um, Notebook LM is by Google. So this, like it's, um, what you're seeing here is kind of like a, a scientific notebook-ish, but behind it is Gemini, uh, Google's AI that runs that.
And is this something that, um, learns and teaches other models or do we get to keep it to ourselves? Like I'm just worried about privacy concerns and, and.
This one is, um, because we're using our school accounts, they keep it, they keep that in-house. And because it's a school Google account, it does not train other models. It only stays basically within our, I thought, they called it like a bucket of information.
Okay. And on the 1.7 million prompts, that's not like the kids went out to ChatGPT. They're using securely for that.
Yes, that's the AI.
I just wanted people who might not know that to know that.
That's securely and that's just our kids. Again, this is us building our own AI models inside our own system to benefit our students as well as our employees. And again, it's about working smarter, not harder. And just the work that Colin has done is just tremendous. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't know of any other school district right now that is, um, there, um, with this. And Colin probably does because he lives in that space more than I, but it's, it's truly amazing what, what's going on here. I mean, cause it's, it's not going away. So it's, we can either put our heads in the sand and say, oh, we hope it doesn't whatever. Or we can be out there and be responsible and teach our students and our staff how to use it appropriately. And that's what it's about. How do you appropriately use it to benefit your work and what it is you're trying to do?
On that, I did start a, um, a group called Show Me AI and it, we meet once a month and that's a statewide group. And now I have, um, two people from DSE, MSBA. I've invited a policy lawyer in a bunch of school districts now that have joined because some of them are saying, we're not talking about AI in our school district, but I just need to be in the conversation to figure it out. And so it is, um, it is a very exciting space.
And tomorrow, he is also leading a discussion with our regional curriculum coordinators association. So Colin is definitely in the mix of using his knowledge to better the educational experience in AI for the region and the state.
Well, Colin, you're so cool. And like, you just, you've taught me so much in just even the short time that we've been looking into AI and growing it within the district. And so I'm just like, your work is incredible. And I just had one question to kind of clarify. So I know that what we're looking at right here is just the six through twelve science vertical. And so when you said that the plan is to look at how to benefit new teachers coming in, is the plan an idea that there would be this thing? I don't even know what to call it. Like that would be for like pre-K through twelve and all the curriculum guides and, and everything that a teacher might need or want would be there?
Absolutely.
And then they like talk to each other.
Yeah. And at moments notice, like any question or whim or thought or idea, you could access that very quickly.
It's really neat. It's really neat. So you mentioned a couple of different stakeholder groups, right? We've got, we're, we're addressing student need first. Great place to start, obviously. Teachers, you talked about administration, um, but we discussed another stakeholder group tonight earlier, Beth, with our community. And I'd love to see if we can find a way to build out an AI widget on our, on our school website or somewhere that our community can use to come ask Lindbergh specific questions. And maybe we feed that, all of the communications that all of the different places are creating. And then your conversation can be, hey, what's going on at Lindbergh High School tonight? What, you know, what are the things that are coming up? And you can have a back and forth.
We've actually talked about that. Yeah. Not with Colin yet, but now that I know that Colin can do this. We can keep it in-house. No, I, I think that's a great idea. We've talked about, how do we, how do we automate the receptionist? As far as, we have a receptionist, of course, for if the question can't be answered, but pull all that information that is online on our website to answer questions. Exactly what you said.
Yeah. And I think, I'm, I like the idea of being able to put it into a system where we control the inputs. Right? Cause that's one of the big concerns is if you put false data in, then it presents false data as, you know, the answer and that's not right. So being able to have our own, you know, with our own guidelines and our own controls to say, here's the, the info I want you to, to rely on to answer the queries you're getting from my community.
And we are looking at other tools too, that are specifically mean data privacy standards and built for teachers. Uh, and the, the content that would be specifically for teachers and especially for K or pre-K through twelve teachers too. Cause you can get some of these AI tools that are specific to English, but we're trying to look for ones that would be applied to everyone because the cost of it. So that way we can, what we're spending our money on does apply to everyone pre-K through twelve.
Awesome.
So quick question, um, also drawing from the work that we did with the communications committee, building capacity. You are amazing, Colin, as everyone has said. You presented to the student life, um, group this past fall. And I mean, just the way you explain it, it's, it's incredible. Cause this is not an area, normally I would hear it and go, eh. Who else on our team? Cause you can't work twenty-four hours a day. I, I, and I, I just, I can hear so many possibilities, what you were just talking about, Andy, you know, are we looking?
Yes, he can.
That we need to be rewarding him if we, if he is. Are we looking to, to build capacity within other departments? Like when you said you worked with the science teams and write, who, who are the folks that are doing that in addition to you?
So, um, we, like on Friday, we met, I'm sorry, um, Monday, I met, uh, myself, Katie Johnson with our, um, high school librarians and they're rolling out a piece. Every elementary has done lessons, uh, three through five. Every middle school has done lessons, uh, seven through eight. And so we're working with the librarians. Katie Stoltenberg, our instructional technology specialist is also leading the charge with me as well. So we have, uh, all their instructional coaches are leading that as well. Tara has a budget sheet, so I'm putting like three more people onto that. Cause she's got a wish list, you know? If you don't have a wish list, what do you have? But, um, but in reality, we do, we are building the capacity. Uh, we've had meetings with our, um, support staff. And so we're, we're, uh, we're building that very quickly. And this is something that when I share something or when they share something, they usually go out and share with three more people. So it is, it is moving very, very fast. Um, but that is a great question.
I just wanted to also point out how much I love the, the sheet that says what's an acceptable use and not acceptable use. Because I think that this is, when you actually like, yeah, I'm gonna use AI and you sit down to do it, you're like, wait, I don't know where that line is. And I think that this is really helpful and the more of that you can have, the better. And the more our students are gonna understand how it's appropriate to use and not.
Definitely.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Matt did have a little tear in his eye too, when you were talking about this and Andy May as well. So thank you. Awesome guys. Awesome work. Thank you. Five point O adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop sixteen, ten?
So moved.
Second.
Matt, uh, motioned and Jen seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board Workshop sixteen, ten is adjourned.